All right, hery, hery, hery. The Protection Policy Evidence Hearing for Nonrenewal of El Presidente is now in session. It is May 22nd in the year of Alor 2019. Roll call. Alder Stevens?
Here.
Alder Vanderlees?
Here.
Alder Scannell is present, the Chair, and Alder Stoyer, I have not heard from him, assuming he will be showing up any time now. We do have a court, though, so we will begin. Item one, for consideration of possible action on the formal evidentiary hearing on the nonrenewal of the Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor license issued to El Presidente Green Bay LLC care of Marco La Porta, President, Agent 2019, North Washington Street. We may convene in closed session if we so desire. As far as I -- is there any reason for the city why we would wish to do so?
I'm not requesting.
Okay, no reason here. So it's up to you if you would like to do this in closed session or have an open court.
Yes, open session's fine.
Okay, then we'll do it in open session. Assistant Attorney Mays?
Good afternoon, committee members. Attorney Bangborn, Mr. Laporta. We're here today because the recommendation has been made not to renew the liquor license at 219 North Washington, a business known as El Presidente owned by Marco Laporta. Over the past year since the license was last renewed, there have been 53 calls for service at that location, at least 30 of which involve El Presidente employees and/or patrons. I have generated a timeline for the committee's benefit to follow along. I know last night, the council discussed the use of 1,200 hours of city employee resources at the council meeting. One way to recapture some of those hours is to not renew the liquor license at El Presidente. Over 30 calls, some of which required as many as 15 officers responding. Then more officers had to be sent to follow up. The municipal court staff needed to be utilized to prosecute violations. It adds up to a lot of city resources that have been spent over the past year on a business that is not being a good neighbor and not playing by the rules. Of the 30 calls, seven had enforcement actions taken for violations of Chapter 125 of Wisconsin statutes and the ordinances authorized by Chapter 125. Those are the liquor law violations. The testimony that will be presented here this afternoon will lay out a pattern of either intentional or ignorant disregard for these liquor laws. We have two community police officers and one night shift officer here today to explain the nature of these offenses, which include disorderly house, liquor license violations, not providing surveillance, offering all-you-can-drink specials, serving underage patrons, operating after hours, and even having their head of security kick an unruly patron in the face while a police officer was attempting to detain him. After hearing the testimony today and reviewing the evidence that will be presented, I would urge you to recommend upholding the council's prior decision to not renew the liquor licenses for Marco Laporta and El Presidente.
The defense, please.
Thank you. Mr. Laporta started out as an investor in this business in February of 2017. It was being run by a different gentleman at that point, as I understand it. That gentleman came to Mr. Laporta in March of 2018 and advised him that he was going to shut the business down. Marco was not desirous of that happening, as he had, as I indicated, put some money into that business. He was an investor in the business. So he undertook to run the business himself. At that time, in March of 2018, he made what turned out to be the very poor decision to hire a management company to operate the upstairs bar. So the way this facility works, as I understand it, there's a restaurant on the ground floor, there's a bar on the upper floor. The bar is only open on Saturdays. The remainder of the week, the restaurant is run downstairs. So he hired this company called Dubline to manage the bar. They were running the security, they were doing the majority of the work up there, and as Mr. Laporta describes it, a lot of these issues occurring under their control of the bar. That came to a head in August when there was some issues, or September, I'm sorry, he ultimately decided that he was going to eliminate these people. He did have a contract with them that was supposed to be for six months. When the contract expired in September, he did give them the required 30-day notice to fire them, and then they worked through the end of October. If you look through the timeline, you can see one of the incidents that last occurred while they were there was this incident on October 28th that required the police to disperse a crowd that was yelling outside the bar. Marco has been in charge of running the bar since November 1st, since he got rid of Dubline. I can tell that the number of calls that have come in since he got rid of Dubline have decreased substantially, starting with November. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 calls. Looks like there may be 10 calls. I don't believe all of those calls actually are for people who are inside the bar. Some of those are instances that occurred out on the street that may or may not be connected to El Presidente, and I'm sure we'll hear about that during the testimony. He has also taken other steps to try to manage the facility in a way that would prevent these types of occurrences. He has security cameras, which have been requested, that now record and maintain those recordings for 30 days. He has RD scanners that are in place now that scan, and they do scan every single ID of every person who wants to come into the bar. He has at least five bouncers, or up to five bouncers on staff when they are open, and they either utilize a pat-down or a wand of every person, metal detecting wand of every person who wants to come in, in an effort to try to resolve some of the issues that have been occurring. He understands that there have been some problems there. He tells me that he's been working hard to try to fix them. His primary, if there's some room for compromise with the board, his primary concern is keeping the restaurant going. As I indicated, the bar is only open one day a week. If he could maintain the liquor license for the bar, or for the restaurant, he would be willing to even shut down the bar, if that's something that the board or the city council would be willing to consider. Thank you.
All right, I'll call my first witness, Officer Mark Strojny.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman. We should, if we could just get everyone sworn in right away, that would probably be a quicker process. Everyone that's going to testify would like to get sworn in, and we can just get it all done right away.
So who more will be testifying?
I have three officers.
Mr. Laporta may testify, so we should probably swear him and his security manager, Dean Edick, who is standing in the back, may testify, so we should swear the two of them as well.
Okay. Use your right arm, hand. Do you so swear to solemnly tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Officer Strojny, what is your current occupation?
Police officer for the City of Green Bay.
And how long have you been working for the City of Green Bay?
In July, it'll be 20 years.
And what is your current position with the Green Bay Police Department?
Currently, I'm assigned to the Community Police Department in the downtown Charlie District.
And is North Washington Street in your area that you're assigned to?
Yes, it is.
How does your role as a community police officer differ from that of a patrol officer?
We deal with more quality of life issues, ongoing long-term solutions through landlord tenant, neighborhood disputes versus patrol. Oftentimes, the radio calls are so busy, but they're going call to call to call, and we look at more long-term permanent solutions.
And as part of your long-term problem-solving efforts, do you review reports from other officers to inform you of what's going on in your area?
Yes, I do.
Are you aware of issues arising at 219 North Washington Street over the past year?
Yes, I am.
And what businesses located there?
El Presidente.
And what kinds of issues are you aware of over the past year?
Over the past year, there's been several large fights spilling order into the streets. There's been underage drinking, open after hours, improperly purchased hard alcohol, dirty alcohol, license not displayed, no licensed bartender. There's been several stipulation violations and disorderly house.
I've provided the committee members with a timeline of calls for service since the last liquor license renewal decision was made. Have you had a chance to review that timeline prior to the hearing today?
Yes, I have.
And to the best of your knowledge, is the timeline an accurate representation of calls for service to El Presidente?
Miss it is, and there are probably even more calls, I don't want to say that aren't important or minor, but may don't rise to the effect or the rate of a computer-generated call. So there's probably more calls.
And what has your approach been towards how to handle the offenses, the violations that have happened at El Presidente?
Firstly, I mean, first, probably, very informal, getting to know the person. I mean, the person know that there is a problem. That doesn't address it, we'll go to warnings, citations, and eventually to this point that we're at now, if we don't hit a change in behavior.
Do you recall following up to an incident that happened on June 10th of 2018?
Yes, I do.
And what was the nature of that incident?
There was a large fight right in front of El Presidente. There was several females beating on another female. They disroved her. They were kicking, punching her while she was down the ground, and all that happened. There was another fight with the same type of behavior going on.
I'd like to show the council a brief, a couple of brief clips of that particular fight. Can you see?
Those were obtained off of someone today spoke account that came forward to express concerns.
And were those discovered as part of the investigation of the June 10th disturbance at El Presidente?
Yes, they were.
When you followed up with El Presidente, were you able to obtain surveillance video from their cameras?
No, I was not.
Why not?
When I talked to, I forget her last name, but she used to host us at the time, Elizabeth. I asked her for cameras, and she stated they were none installed. This is over a year after the liquor license. I pointed to several cameras that were in the bar, and I asked her about those, and she stated that those were just for show, and that they were in the process of opening up cameras.
So you stated that El Presidente was installing cameras. Were they supposed to have cameras as a condition of their liquor license?
Yes, they were. They were supposed to have a camera system that held recording for 14 days, and then upon request of the police department to provide that recording.
While you were at El Presidente trying to obtain video, did you observe any other violations?
Yes, I saw all-you-can-drink special. Ladies, I forget the price, if it was $4 or $10, but it was all-you-can-drink special. And there was also no licensed bartender on scene.
And what time of the day was that?
It's approximately 2:00 in the afternoon.
After that big fight, not being able to obtain video from El Presidente, and all-you-can-drink special being discovered, did you have a chance to discuss the violations with Marco Laporta?
Yes, I did.
And how did that conversation go?
Marco stated that he was willing to do whatever was possible to clean things up, that he had just bought out several of his business partners or becoming more involved, and that he would be spending more weekends down at his cavern to see what was going on.
And that was in mid-June of last year?
Of last year, yes.
What citations were issued to Mr. Laporta as a result of the June 10th incident and follow-up?
Follow-up there, I know there was two license stipulations, one for the all-you-can-drink special, one for the failure to capture video or no video surveillance. There was a disorderly house, and I'm sure, I know there are--
Was any enforcement action taken for the not having a licensed operator on site?
There was, I believe, there was a warning. I'm not sure if it was a verbal or written warning, but there was a warning for that. Then there was also a warning for failure to display the alcohol license as well.
Were you present for an alcohol, tobacco, and firearms inspection of El Presidente that was conducted on June 21st of 2018?
Yes, it was.
And what was discovered during that inspection?
There was, I believe, 33 bottles of alcohol that were confiscated, and I would have to review the report to know. I don't know if the numbers, there was eight bottles that were infested with fruit flies. I don't know if that was in addition to or included in the 33 bottles. And then there was two bottles that had a hard drink mixed in the original bottle, which is not allowed. So a pre-mixed hard, no, alcohol drink.
For the benefit of the committee, I'm showing you, what is the exhibit that I'm showing you right now?
That's a field report from the ATF.
And that's the inspection that occurred on June 21st of 2018?
Yes, it is.
That you were personally present for?
Correct.
Does that field report appear to be inaccurate representation of the report that was given by ATF agent?
Yes.
I'll provide a copy of that to each of the committee members.
And there's also several bottles that were not from a proper wholesaler. Looks like they were bought from retail outlets instead of wholesale.
After the ATF inspection subsequently, were you informed of an incident involving two underage patrons being cited at El Presidente on June 30th of 2018?
Yes, it was. Officer Clark came forward, both called me and emailed me an incident where there were several people that were cited.
And why did Officer Clark reach out to you?
He knew, I have a good working relationship with him. He knew that I was the community police officer for that area and thought I should be aware of it for any possible follow-up.
And as part of your follow-up, did you become aware of how the patrons were able to enter the license premise?
Yep. One of the females stated that she was underage, and she used her actual ID. They looked at it and allowed her in anyways, and that there had been a, she had been a witness or part of a physical disturbance inside the bar.
So she didn't use a fake ID?
Correct. She did not use her fake, a fake ID.
She used her genuine ID?
I showed that she was not 21.
Did you issue any citations to Mr. Laporta for underage patrons being on license premise?
Yes, I did. The following morning, which was the same day of the event, I called and left a voicemail with Mr. Laporta. Four or five days later, I was able to get ahold of him and spoke to him over the phone. He agreed over the phone to accept citations for allowing underage on premise. I also informed him, this was four or five days later, he was not aware that this had happened through the following week. He again stated that he would be spending more time on the weekends, as he had previously stated. I made him aware of also some crime reporting services for a crime analysis where you could sign up for alert program or any police call. I just, his address, he would be notified. And I checked earlier this afternoon, and as of this date, he has not signed up for that, and that was close to a year ago that we had this conversation.
As part of your follow-up investigations and communications with El Presidente over the past year, have those discussions involved a group known as Dubline Entertainment?
Yes, they have.
And what is Dubline Entertainment?
Dubline Entertainment is a group that, I guess, provides security. DJs, bartenders are known to maybe get their foot in the door and then try to move in. And I've known one instance where they've tried to rent out or have rented out a bar for the weekend. They really push the legal envelope on what they are trying to promote and do when they do get into a business.
Did Dubline Entertainment operate within El Presidente, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Do you know how long they were operating within El Presidente?
I believe I heard testimony that they were done in October or November of 99?
Of--
I'm sorry, of 18.
Okay. Since Dubline left El Presidente or got kicked out of El Presidente, have calls for service stopped?
No, they haven't. And I guess what is concerning is they haven't stopped, and they, during the winter months, calls for service in the entertainment district generally go down, and that hasn't been the case at El Presidente.
What kind of calls are you still seeing being dispatched to El Presidente?
There's still underage drinking, battery, open after hours, stipulation violations.
Are there big fights that are still happening at El Presidente?
Yes, there are. There are still large fights that start inside and still open in the streets.
And as part of your long-term problem-solving process, have you discussed the impact El Presidente has had on other local businesses?
Yes, I've met with other local businesses in the downtown area, and they are concerned it's caused some of them to send their bar staff home early through their bar staff's request. They don't feel safe leaving at a normal bar time. They want to close 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. We've talked to other bar owners going back to close to a year, and they're wondering why do they still have their license? What's going on? What's the city or the police doing for us that they're still allowed to operate like this?
And have other neighboring businesses been cooperative in providing surveillance for some of these incidents where cameras have not been installed at El Presidente?
Yes.
Based on your experience within the city and the neighborhood El Presidente is located in in particular, do you have any public safety concerns if El Presidente is able to keep its liquor license?
Yes, I do. I guess it's twofold is, it shows other operators in the area that are good operators that they don't have to be, that nobody's held accountable. And the second, it takes resources away. And what else can we do? We've talked, given verbal warnings, written citations. We've called them, the landlords and other people, what's next? There's been multiple situations where we could have cited them, and we don't because nothing happens. It still happens to operate this way, so what's next if this doesn't work?
I don't have any further questions for this right now. All right, so you're aware that there are 53 calls for service since the last time the license was renewed? Is that your understanding?
I would have to look at the numbers, but--
Well, why don't you take a look? If you want to count them, you can count them. Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and take a look and count what those are? Is it 53?
Why didn't count them?
Okay, go ahead and take, go ahead and take a look. And after November 1st, 2018, is it fair to say there are 10 out of those 53? If you look at the dates?
Okay.
As you indicated, it's your understanding that Dubline was done as of the end of October 2018, right? Is that right?
Correct.
So there were 43 calls for service while Dubline was there, and there were 10 calls after, right?
Right.
Okay, so fair to say that there has been a decrease in calls about a quarter, by, there's only a quarter of the calls since Dubline left, or there were before they left, correct? 43 versus 10?
Okay.
And I'm sorry, could you spell your last name? So it seems like there has been a decrease in calls for service since Dubline left? You have, before today, had you seen this timeline that the city attorney provided?
Before today, no.
Okay. Couple of these incidents that I wanted to ask you some questions about. The June--
Excuse me, I guess I can't recall if I got it yesterday afternoon or this morning, so--
Okay. The June 10th, 2018 incident that you were asked about, it says there's a large disturbance that spilled out from El Presidente onto the street. Were you there for that disturbance?
No, I was not.
Okay, so you didn't investigate that?
No.
Your information comes from reading a different officer's report?
And speaking with them, yes.
Speaking with the officers?
Yes.
Okay, do you recall who those officers were?
Officer Clark, Officer Berlin, and I believe Officer Jerry Young, were three.
You didn't write this summary, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know who did? If you don't, that's fine.
No.
Okay. What information do you have that the disturbance spilled out from El Presidente?
Reading officer's details.
Okay, those details indicate that there was a fight inside?
That there is, yes.
And then it continued outside? And that was the instance where there was a disorderly house citation issued to Mr. Laporta? Now, the June 20th-- the June 21st incident where there was an investigation into the, by the ATF, you were present for that investigation?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so there were 33 bottles of alcohol that were confiscated, correct?
Correct.
And the timeline here indicates that, as I understand what's written here, that 31 of the bottles were confiscated because they were purchased improperly, is that right? Does that sound right? Okay, and two bottles were confiscated because they had other alcohol mixed in, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. You're not allowed to mix other alcohol in, is that right?
Correct.
And the purchases were being made by, do you understand them to be having been made by the bar manager or a restaurant manager who didn't realize that he couldn't purchase alcohol from Woodman's or Superior Discount Liquor?
I don't know about that.
Okay, so you don't know who made the purchases?
Correct.
Mr. Laporta, you spoke to him about this incident, right?
Yes.
And he indicated that he understood that he could not sell liquor or purchase liquor from Woodman's or Superior or from somebody who wasn't a distributor?
Yes.
Okay, and as far-- Okay. And as far as you're aware, has that happened since June twenty-first?
As far as I'm aware, no.
As far as you're aware, have there been any more incidents of alcohol being mixed in the original bottles since June twenty-first?
Not that I'm aware of.
The June thirtieth incident where apparently a young lady got into the bar by showing her ID that demonstrated clearly she was under twenty-one, do you know if the bar was using ID scanners on June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen?
No, I did not.
Did you go and check if they were?
No, I did not.
Okay. Do you know if they are now?
No, I do not.
ID scanners are something that would help to resolve this type of issue, is that right?
That is.
Now, you said you're familiar with Dubline Entertainment. Is that because they are involved with other businesses in the community?
Uh, one that I know of.
Okay. You said they pushed the envelope of what's legal. What does that mean?
Uh, they had another establishment and on their Facebook page, they advertised Tattoo Weekend.
What does that mean?
That they're gonna have tattoos without a license and open it out to proud under eighteen out of town.
So doing things that, that is against the rules appears to be something in your experience?
Well, they advertised it and followed through with this.
Right. Okay. So attempting to do things that are against the rules appears to be something that Dubline Entertainment does?
At least once in the past, yes.
And you said you were aware of the fact that they were in, working inside El Presidente?
Yes.
Did you ever, when you were trying to see if you could work things out, uh, did you ever have any contact with any of the staff from Dubline Entertainment?
Yes, we did.
Do you remember who you spoke to?
I believe there was Isaac and Jason.
And what was the nature of those conversations?
We had a, um, called in with a meeting with myself and another community police officer, my lieutenant, and sat down and expressed some of our concerns. Also, uh, at the time Marco was invited, but he did not show up.
Speaking with Isaac and Jason didn't change Dubline's behavior, is that fair to say?
Maybe briefly it did.
As far as you know, they're not well-stocked yet. Do you know if they're operating anywhere else in the city right now?
I had heard they were, but I haven't seen it myself.
Do you know if there are similar issues at that location?
I've not heard any of any issues at that location.
There are a number of incidents that are described on the, uh, timeline. We'll look at the last two pages and we'll start after November third. So there's a November, or after November first, when Dubline wasn't there anymore. There's a November third, twenty-eighteen incident. It just says officers dispatched for crowd control, all closed twenty-two minutes later. Were you familiar, are you familiar with that incident?
That specific one? Uh, just through reading through it.
Okay. Isn't it true that that, that was the night that El Presidente isn't even open?
I'm not aware of that.
Do you recall whether they were open or not?
No, I don't know.
Do you recall whether these folks were dispersed for crowd control, were inside the bar at any point then?
No, I do not.
So you don't know if this had anything to do with El Presidente other than it was on the street outside that bar?
Yes.
December second, it indicates there's a six-person fight in the street in front of El Presidente. Were you present for that one?
No, I was not.
Okay. Have you read the report?
I may have, I need to get refreshed on it.
Okay. The description here indicates that a gentleman started a fight with other individuals because security wouldn't let him into the bar, right?
Okay.
Is that, does that sound familiar to you?
Right.
Do you recall that incident?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so other than El Presidente telling a person, you can't come in here, they had no involvement in this incident, is that right?
I would have to read the report.
You don't disagree with what it says here in this summary, though?
No, I don't.
Security refused to let the person into a club and he got into a fight with another unknown suspect.
No, I did not.
Do you have these reports with you?
Not with me at all.
Okay. January first, twenty-nineteen, the summary indicates two security guards were dealing with two males involved in a physical fight. Do you recall that incident?
I would have to review the incident report.
You weren't there for that one?
No, I was not.
You don't have any independent recollection of it?
No, I do not.
Okay. The, there's an incident that's described as having occurred on March thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Uh, it indicates that some individuals were, there was a call for service because individuals were fighting outside of the bar. Do you recall that incident?
Yes, that one I do.
Okay. Were you present for that one?
No, I was not.
Okay. But you've read the reports?
Yes, that one.
Okay. So it looks like some folks were fighting inside the bar and they kicked him out, is that right?
Correct.
And then there was a fight outside the bar?
Yes.
And you responded to the fight that occurred outside the bar after El Presidente told these folks you can't be in here?
The police.
The police told the folks they couldn't be inside El Presidente?
No, the police responded. You asked if I responded. No, I didn't.
Sorry. In general, I mean, the police responded?
Yes.
So there was a fight inside, they appropriately told these people you'd have to leave, they left, and then there was a fight outside?
No.
No. How would you describe the incident?
Appropriately would be informing the police that there's a fight before they physically, physically push people out and call the police. They were, we were never notified.
Okay. So they should have called you and said two people were fighting and we told them to leave?
Yes.
Okay. And they didn't do that?
Correct.
There have been instances where they did contact the police to say that we have a problem, is that correct?
There has, yes.
Okay. July fifteenth, twenty-eighteen, security contacted the police? According to the summaries, is that correct? Uh, July seventh, twenty-eighteen, security contacted the police for help with a patron, is that correct?
Yes.
July eighth, twenty-eighteen, security contacted the police for help with a patron, is that correct?
If you say so, I don't have the timeline, so.
You have no reason to dispute those, are those dates that are in the timeline?
Yes.
So certainly there are instances, instances where they followed the proper procedure and did call you guys and say, hey, could you come down here and help us?
Where they followed part of the proper procedure, yes.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. I don't have any other questions for this witness.
Any question?
Thank you. Next, I call Officer Fu Chi Zhang. Now, Officer Zhang, what is your current occupation?
A police officer at the City of Green Bay.
And how long have you been with Green Bay PD?
The six years this August.
And what shift do you work?
Um, right now, I'm working the power shift, which is from seven PM to ten-thirty AM. Prior to that, I was working the night shift, which is ten-fifteen PM to six-forty-five AM.
And you've been working those shifts for the past year?
Yes.
And do you patrol the bar district downtown?
I do.
And as an overnight officer, have you been dispatched or responded to incidents at El Presidente?
Yes.
How many times are you responding to incidents at El Presidente? What kind of frequency?
I would say weekly, mostly weekends.
And how does that compare to other businesses in the area?
Call volume's definitely higher at El Presidente than most other bars on North or South Washington.
And on a typical shift around bar close time, is there any additional focus on having enforcement presence at El Presidente compared to other bars in the area?
Yes.
Why is that?
Uh, just due to the, uh, past disturbances that have occurred, that have spilled out of El Presidente.
And were you on duty in the early morning hours of September sixteenth of twenty-eighteen?
Yes.
Uh, do you recall being dispatched to an incident at El Presidente that morning?
Yes.
Uh, do you recall how many other officers were also dispatched to that call?
I would say more than a dozen.
Does, does fifteen sound accurate?
Yes.
And what was the nature of that disturbance?
Um, I was under dispatch for a disturbance between, uh, the security of El Presidente and a patron. When my coworker, Officer Rager, got on scene, he witnessed the physical altercation between, uh, I believe it was Isaac, the head of Dubline slash head of security at that time for Presidente. Uh, he went to go try to break it up. Um, there was a large crowd, uh, surrounding him. He had to use his OC spray to get control of the suspect that Isaac was, uh, fighting with. Inherently, he, when he used his OC, it bounced off the concrete and he suffered some, uh, OC spray himself. So as he was trying to, uh, get the suspect under control, Isaac decided to come back into the disturbance and, uh, kick the suspect two to three times, which incited the, uh, the crowd around the disturbance.
And what do you personally remember about that incident from your perspective on the street?
Um, I was, uh, I would say the second wave of officers that were dispatched to the large amount of people that were exiting El Presidente. I was mainly there for crowd control, getting people to clear, getting people to go home. While Officer Rager was dealing with his situation, another disturbance occurred. And as I was, uh, right outside the doors of El Presidente, myself and another officer were swarmed by people coming out of El Presidente and another disturbance occurred there. Where we had to physically remove people and get them on their way. So it was, uh, definitely outnumbered and overwhelming. I, I, I was surprised no officers got hurt that day because of just the overwhelming, uh, number of people compared to officers.
And was any enforcement action taken against El Presidente following that incident?
Uh, yes, I believe Officer Shroni, um, issued a disorderly house ticket the next day. The night of, uh, Isaac, the head of Dubline Security and, um, head of El Presidente that night, was issued a citation for battery and disorderly conduct.
And I'd like to show video of that disturbance. Officer, were you also on duty during the early morning hours of January sixth?
Yeah.
Two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Do you recall, uh, any incidents at El Presidente that night?
Yes. Uh, Officer Rager and I were out on foot, just doing a foot patrol of North Washington bars. Um, when I noticed a group of people, uh, leave El Presidente at approximately two-thirty-seven AM in the morning.
And what action did you and Officer Rager take?
Uh, we said do a tavern check. Um, while doing so, uh, we observed some people staring down at us from the second floor window. Um, we attempted to, uh, enter the, uh, El Presidente, although the doors are locked. A few minutes later, a group of people walked out, um, of the front door. And, uh, that's when we made contact with them and also, uh, made our way upstairs to the second floor where we, uh, came across, uh, multiple people that were still in the bar.
And how many people are supposed to be in the bar after two-thirty?
Nobody.
Uh, was there any management present?
There was.
Uh, did you speak to Mr. Laporta?
I did.
And what was that conversation like?
Uh, he explained to me that, uh, people were just up in the bar talking and that he thought that was okay. Uh, however, you know, being a experienced bar owner, you should know that there should be no other patrons in the, uh, tavern after two-thirty. I believe, uh, I also had the conversation with them that, um, other bars on North Washington or South Washington, they all abide by the rules and everybody's out by a certain time and there's no issues there. And, uh, I ended up, uh, I believe citing him that night for, uh, opening, uh, being open after, um, hours.
And speaking more generally, uh, when you respond to an incident in a bar, do you always issue a citation if you observe a violation?
No, not necessarily.
And is your treatment of El Presidente any, any different?
No, I think, uh, they've, El Presidente as well as their customers have gotten a lot of leeway. Um, as far as law enforcement side goes, uh, we, I think we've been a lot of breaks and, um, using our discretion to not cite, uh, during some instances.
And why, why wouldn't you issue those citations? Why would you use your discretion?
Um, it depends on the situation, I guess. Uh, if it's a large disturbance or whatnot. Our main goal is to keep the peace, uh, during that bar time or, uh, when people are, are, are leaving and, uh, to just have people disperse and get on their way. Uh, however, if a, if a large incident arises, um, you know, we, we usually have a pretty good relationship with the community policing officers. We usually turn, uh, information over to them or give them our reports. And, uh, they usually follow up with the businesses and they either do, you know, landlord referrals or citations if needed.
And based on your experience, uh, responding, uh, to the incidents on the night shift and downtown in particular, do you have concerns about the safety of downtown if El Presidente is allowed to keep your license?
Absolutely. Um, like I said, just with the amount of disturbances that have occurred from there and as I mentioned earlier, the, the conversation I had with Mr. Laporta is nobody else on that district seems to be having issues following the rules and abiding by the laws. And, uh, I, I think we've given them enough chances, you know, um, to fix things. However, uh, things don't seem to be changing.
No further questions for this witness. The incidents that you respond to, those are typically the early morning hours, is that right?
Yes.
Weekends?
Yes.
They're for incidents that occurred or originated in the bar, which is the upstairs section of the facility, is that right?
Yes.
The, have you ever had to respond to any, uh, calls for trouble that originated from the restaurant portion of the facility that Mr. Laporta operates?
Uh, I do not believe so. I believe they're closed. Um, I don't know what time they close, but they aren't open while I, during that bar time.
So your concerns for community safety have nothing to do with Mr. Laporta's operation of the restaurant?
As far as, no, no.
And I'm sorry, I, could you give me your first and last name again?
And I'm sorry, could you give me your first and last name again?
You want the first full spelling?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
First name is P. S. Paul, H. U. E. C. H. I. Last is X. I. O. N. G.
Thank you. Now you talked about a September 16th, 2018 incident in which there was a disturbance outside of El Presidente, correct?
Yes.
And that's the incident where this gentleman named Isaac was fighting with a patron and then kicked the person after the individual was in police custody, correct?
Well, officers were trying to take that subject into custody, yes.
And you described this Isaac individual as being somehow associated with Dubline and somehow, and you also described him several times as the El Presidente's security manager, is that right?
Yes.
And your understanding of this gentleman is that he works for Dubline?
I believe, yeah, he's worked at Dubline, but he manages the security at El Presidente.
Well, that's because Dubline was at that time managing the security because of the contract they had with El Presidente, is that right?
Okay, yeah.
You don't have any information that this Isaac gentleman was actually an employee of El Presidente or Mr. Laporta?
I do not have that information, though.
Now, on January 6th, the individuals you saw leave approximately 2:37 a.m., did you interact with those folks when they left?
I did not. They left, we were walking on foot patrol, so they had left the bar and I believe they walked east over to the parking lot.
And I'm assuming it's 2:30, but is 2:30 the bar closing time that they should have been out by?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't know if they were served any alcohol after 2:30 because you didn't ask them?
I did not ask those people.
And then you said a few minutes later, some more individuals left and that when they opened the door, that's how you were able to get in?
Yes.
Because the door was locked?
Yes.
Okay. So no other patrons were able to get in after 2:37?
No.
Did you interact with the folks who left at 2:37? I'm sorry, with the folks who left a few minutes after, when you were able to get in the room?
I believe they were all indexed, there are IDs.
So they were spoken to?
Yes.
Do you know if they were served after 2:30?
Not to my recollection, no.
And then the individuals who you interacted with who were inside the bar with Mr. Laporta, were those individuals drinking when you came in?
I can't remember. There may have been some alcoholic beverages on the bar, but I can't remember.
Do you know if any of the individuals who were in the bar when you were able to make entry were staff members?
I believe Mr. Laporta stated some were, however, some, they weren't. They were just up there talking.
Did you try to verify with these folks themselves whether they were staff members, patrons? If they were there drinking after?
Just the ones that did not identify themselves as staff. Otherwise, I did not check, I guess, quote unquote, credentials of, that they claimed to be staff.
Is that incident the only time after November 1 of 2018 that you personally interacted with Mr. Laporta or have there been others?
Me personally, I believe that was the last time.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Next, I'd call Officer Craig Carlson. Officer, what is your current occupation?
Police officer for the City of Green Bay Police Department.
And what is your position in the Green Bay Police Department?
Along with Officer Strani, I'm a community police officer in the downtown Charlie District.
And how long have you been with the Green Bay Police Department?
It'll be twenty years in general.
We've heard a lot about calls for service at El Presidente. Have any interventions been attempted to course correct some of those violations, some of the issues that have been observed?
Well, part of our job is to look at calls, calls for service. When calls get to be at a moment where officers are saying, hey, something needs to be done about this, that's when we step in and meet with the owner. So as far as interventions, you know, there's meeting with Marco, saying, hey, what's going on? What can we do to make things better? Things don't change. You know, verbal warnings, written warnings, then citations. And part of our job is dealing with nuisance properties. And we clarify something is a nuisance property if we get three or more calls for service in a calendar year that are either a written warning, a municipal citation, or an arrest out of the property. So if we get those three, we deem that this is a nuisance property, we bring in the owner of the business.
And the chronic nuisance ordinance, those are for specific types of violations, is that correct? Did you ever meet with members of Dubline Entertainment to discuss expectations or resolving the issues that they were involved in?
Yes, we did. And I believe it was June or July of 2018. We had heard from a night shift lieutenant that they wanted to talk with us because obviously they were aware of the numerous calls. And it was set up basically informally at the police department with Dubline. I believe Marco was also invited to that meeting. So Jason and Isaac did show up to the police department. We had good discussion. They were very receptive to what we said. They admitted that, yeah, there's some things could be changed. Some of those things were, you have any bouncers where, he had a bright colored shirt, so officers go past it, look at there's bouncers outside. You know, who's the good guys? Not to say good is bad, but know who to look for in case there's any problems, you know, security's here or something like that. There's also talk of changing hours, closing early, things like that.
And were any of those changes integrated into El Presidente's operations?
Some of them were, but they were very brief.
And then you said they're very brief, what happened after?
Things went back to normal. Bar didn't close early, same issues as prior to the meeting with them.
And you mentioned that there was a nuisance abatement meeting for this property?
Yes.
What is the purpose of the nuisance abatement meeting?
So as explained earlier, you know, if there's three calls that qualify as a nuisance called, we bring in the owner of the business. Marco was a tenant of that business, so the owners, Ron and Rachel Smiths, were brought in. I believe Marco was also invited to that. And what it basically lays everything out, say, look, this, and they're formed up, every call they got a list, as the attorney here has gotten, say, this is a number of calls. Things are discussed as far as getting alerts for when there's a call to your property so you know each and every time police are called. So that way, as a good landlord, you would contact your tenant and say, hey, what's going on here? So they would be aware of this. They said that they were aware of a lot of calls, that they were in contact with Marco, a lot of times trying to work with him, come up with agreements as far as paying rent. You know, they want to keep him in business. You know, nobody wants anybody to be out of business. They want to keep everything good. So they said they were going to go back and, you know, talk about again with these issues, come up, you know, and see what they could fix.
And were you personally at the abatement meeting regarding 219 North Washington on October 15th of last year?
I think even one part of the, I'm sorry, but part of the plan was too, they talked with Marco about closing off, opening into the top level with, you know, the bar up above, the nightclub up above and the restaurant below. And then using that as potentially a special event venue that wouldn't be open as a regular nightclub that would be more controlled and smaller, I guess, gatherings would be the nightclub.
So at that point, was the strategy getting some third-party intervention to try to help improve some of the issues that officers had been observing? What was the tone of the conversation at the abatement meeting? How did you feel the, was the meeting successful? How would you describe it?
I thought it was a very successful meeting. They were open to listen to what we had to say. They wanted to go back and talk with Marco and see what they could resolve. So obviously, they didn't want to lose their tenant, business in there.
After the abatement meeting, did El Presidente incorporate any of the ideas that were discussed at the abatement meeting into its operations?
Again, I think there was, part of that was to maybe close early so they don't have that late bar crowd. That happened for a little while. You know, the timeframe, maybe a month or two, then all of a sudden it was back to just the way it normally was. It was not closed off for, as far as the building plans, you know, to close that, physically close it off and make it a venue, a special event venue. To my knowledge, that was never done.
And as part of your follow-up contacts, are you aware of the most recent disturbance at El Presidente?
As far in April of this year? Yes.
You said it was in April of this year. Do you know the exact date of that most recent disturbance?
April 21st.
And were the officers able to obtain video of that disturbance?
We weren't, we didn't ask El Presidente for it, but there was surrounding cameras around it. We were able to get that. And again, that, you know, with the calls for service, the guys know where the problem places are. Guys work at night, so their job is, part of their job is to try to control that. So you park a squad in front of someone's house, they're probably not going to do anything wrong. So you get enough squads out there, people are going to come out of the bar and go on their merry way. But continually, you know, night after night, officers have to be in that area. So that particular night, officer was parked in the parking lot across, directly across from this and you still had this large disturbance.
I'd like to play a video of that disturbance. So I've got one video with the north-facing camera and one with the south-facing camera. Kind of shifts between the two cameras.
Are these El Presidente's cameras?
These are cameras at Fox Heights.
Okay.
Great.
Just over the cells.
I guess the good focal point is when we shift cameras is that gentleman in the all-white. There's a little bit of a scuffle here before we shift cameras, but the incident that's described in the timeline follows that group of young men. So that's them leaving El Presidente. Officer, having worked with El Presidente and its landlord and its security partner, do you have any safety concerns for downtown Green Bay if El Presidente is allowed to renew its liquor license?
Yes, Officer Strani and Officer Jong have talked about that, you know, these fights continue. It's not just the Dubline. Since they've been gone, we have continued to have these fights and stuff. And it's spilling outside. You can see people coming from all different directions that somehow get tangled up in all this stuff. You know, we don't want anybody else to get hurt. It's blocking traffic. It's blocking full of people. Disturbing, the second thing, number one, there was an officer parked out there trying to prevent something like this. Number two, the officers on scene learned that this did start inside. The security manager said, hey, you know, we had this earlier. Probably should have called the police at that point and they weren't. Had they done that, we probably would not have had this incident spill in the street.
No further questions for this witness.
So you spoke with Mr. Laporta and told him you need to make some changes in order to try to get some of this stuff under control, is that right?
Both Officer Strani and I have met with Marco, you know, as far as me individually saying that. I can't say I said that, but he was talked to and he admitted that, you know, something needed to be done. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make this better.
One of the things he tried to do to make things better is he got rid of Dubline, right?
Correct.
And one of the things he tried, when you discussed possibly closing down or maybe leaving early, isn't it true that after Dubline left, the bar wasn't open on Fridays anymore? It was only open on Saturdays?
I don't work the night shift at bar close. I have worked overtime. I can't say for sure whether or not it has or has not been open. I know that when Dubline was there, Isaac wasn't there on Fridays, but things were still going on. I can't tell you for sure if it is or not closed.
So you don't know if it's open on Fridays and Saturdays anymore?
Correct.
And isn't it true that after the nuisance abatement meeting that Marco started closing the bar at 2:15 to try to get people out the door a little sooner?
Obviously not, that there's, they're open after hours. As far as Officer Jong testified, that he was cited for being open after hours.
You don't know about any other evenings? You're just talking about that one evening?
Correct.
So you don't know if he was closing at 2:15 on other Saturdays that he was open?
Guys on nights go call the call. Call, can't always sit and watch every single bar and make sure they follow the rules.
So you don't know if he's closing at 2:15?
I don't know if he's closing at 11 or 3 o'clock. I wasn't there.
You recognize that some of the problems that were at this facility were being caused by the folks from Dubline, Jason and Isaac, is that right?
Yes.
That's why you met with them?
Yes.
Have you ever had to respond to any incidents that were caused or that were a result of behavior that originated from the restaurant that Mr. Laporta operates out in the building?
As far as I know, no, but I was an inside view where these people come. I don't know what time he closes the restaurant doors. I know there's a separate entrance for the club.
So there's a bar entrance and there's a restaurant entrance?
Well, there's like a main entrance, but you can turn to the right and go up the stairs to the bar or you can go through another set of doors, I believe, through the restaurant.
You don't have any concerns about safety issues with the restaurant operating during normal business hours in the downtown community, do you?
No, we've never had fights or anything like that.
Since Isaac, I'm sorry, since Marco fired Dubline on November 1st, 2018, how many times have you met with him to try to resolve issues at the facility?
I haven't met with him. Officer Strani's had some contact, I believe.
You haven't yourself? All right, I don't have any further questions.
I have a question. I'm not sure you can answer it. It was probably information, I believe. There was a discussion with Mr. Laporta about closing early. Was there an agreed time as to how early that would be or an expected time?
No, the problem we run into is when we do these, initially somebody comes, hey, I want to run a restaurant or a bar. This was proposed as a restaurant, so it was kind of geared towards just that. When we started getting these calls for service at night, we're like, what do you mean? All of a sudden, we found out, hey, this is a nightclub now. I understand that money was tight, so I had to open up that for, to make some more money. Restaurant wasn't doing as well as they expected.
So was there, when you, do you mean, he's still under oath, right?
We can't stop their times as far as, limit that.
Right, but there was a discussion, was there a discussion of just how early early should be for closing early? Can anyone answer that? No? Okay. Just wondering if, you know...
My understanding is that it was an option that was presented and it was explored. They opened or they closed before a bar closed, but then...
So pretty late?
Correct.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you.
I don't have any further witnesses to call.
Yes, go ahead. On the citations that were issued, have the citations been paid to the City of Green Bay that were logged against the establishment?
I can pull that up right now. My understanding is they resolved those by dismissing some and he pled to others, and Mr. Laporta indicates he has paid for the ones he pled to, I don't know what kind of records... There was an initial plea agreement that had Mr. Laporta plead to two citations, three were dismissed. He's had two subsequent citations that he was found guilty by default on because he never showed up for court. My understanding is he paid them all. And I'm having technical difficulties accessing the internet, so I can't confirm whether he has paid or not.
I think we take it forward.
You did.
He's under roles.
Yeah, I'm under roles.
Okay. Since you are done with your witnesses, and since unfortunately if I leave the meeting very quickly, we will not have a quorum, I need a brief recess, unfortunately. I make a motion for a brief recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we got a brief recess, I'll be back in an hour.
Does it sound brief?
It's shorter than a week.
Is that realistically how long it's going to be?
No, no.
Okay, I'm just...
Five minutes.
Okay, I was sure that was a joke or if that was honestly how long it needs to be going on.
Yeah, it's not an hour. I thought he was serious, I was thinking he was gone for an hour. No, no, I don't care why, I just wanted to know if it was actually an hour.
Right now.
Yeah, it's your back.
Well, I count it as a fact. Yeah, well, time is relative.
Time is relative.
It's true. My relative, but...
Yeah, we're fine to get started.
Okay. Motion to come back into order, signed by Alder Stevens, signed by Alder Vanderleest, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, here we are again. You're resting, Isaac, or...
Yeah, I don't have any further witnesses.
Witnesses?
Dean Edich, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Edich, are you employed by El Presidente?
Yes, I am.
What is your job at El Presidente?
Basically Director of Security.
And about how long have you been in that position?
That position, three weeks in that particular position.
How long have you worked for El Presidente?
Like since, I actually looked it up, since March 16th.
And what did you start as?
I started at basically what they call bouncing security from Dane, I can't think of his last name offhand.
And now you're currently the manager, the supervisor in charge of security.
Yeah.
Okay. And I would like to discuss some security protocols. Does El Presidente have a device that you can use to scan IDs of patrons that are coming in?
Yes, we do. It's called iDetect.
And that's a machine that you put the license in and then it tells you what?
Literally scans the ID, and it will come up, it says whether the ID's expired, if they're over 21 or not, and it's clearly eligible, it comes up green if they're able to come in.
And as far as you understand, all the staff there that works the door, they're trained to use that machine?
Yes, I'm working with them, trying to get them to be more diligent of it.
Okay, the instructions are that every person who comes in, they need to be scanned, is that right?
Correct.
That's the policy that's in place right now?
The only thing it doesn't take care of is passports. That's the only thing that we cannot scan.
But the policy is that every person who comes in has to be scanned?
100%.
And people who aren't old enough, are they turned away?
Correct.
Are there now working security cameras in the facility?
Yes.
Do they record?
Yes.
How long do you keep the recordings for?
30 days, I believe it is.
And are any steps taken by the security staff to check the individuals that are coming in for any kind of weapons or anything like that?
I've been working with the staff that is there. They're not the greatest, but I have over three years of experience working with the Green Bay Packers doing security at the gates. I've worked with some of these officers here at Packer Games.
So you say you're working with them, what kind of training are you giving them?
Teaching them how to properly use the wand. I've tried teaching them how to do pat downs.
So let's break that up. There is a wand.
Correct.
Okay, and you're teaching the security staff how to use it.
Correct, properly use it.
And they're to wand everybody who comes in.
Correct.
You're also teaching them how to do a proper pat down?
Correct.
So there's some instances where the pat down is used versus the wand?
Yeah, if the wand goes off and they can't figure out where it's at, then they'll check the pocket, you know, pat the pocket. However, if I'm at the front door and it's busy, I don't even mess with the wand, I go right to pat down. And the bar manager, I've taken knives off of people, I can't think of his last name, he's a community police officer, Ron. I worked with him at the stadium, he was our main guy at our shop, Go Gate. I filled his pocket with knives, I found booze bottles hidden in canes, I have a knack for it. And they laughed, they're like, how did you know?
But the idea is to train all the employees to properly use the wand and properly conduct the pat downs?
That is what I'm working on.
And the idea is that every person who comes in is going to be given the wand and/or a pat down?
Correct.
And that's what the staff has been instructed to do?
Correct.
Are you open on Fridays anymore?
No.
So it's only Saturday nights?
Correct.
What time on Saturdays does the bar close?
I, and the last call is made before 2:00 a.m., bar time, which is 1:45 regular time, and everybody is out the door by 2:15 regular time, 2:30 what I call bar time.
So you try to have everybody out by 2:15?
Correct.
I don't have any further questions. How long has El Presidente had the ID scanner that you were describing?
As long as I've been there. It was there day one when I got there.
And when was that?
I looked it up, it was March 16th was the first night that I was there.
March 16th of this year?
Yes.
And you testified that you were teaching staff to be more diligent with the ID scanner. What does that mean?
Like, some IDs, you drop it in, if there's a crack, when it scans it, it won't read it right, so reject it. So I always tell them, drop it a second time if it don't scan it right, and it'll come up whether or not, and I told them, if it's expired, it's not a valid ID. They don't come in the door. And I told them, if, I don't care if they're 55 years old, I don't care if you're grandpa, if they ain't got their license on them, identification of, which is passport as well, because we got some with passports, they don't come in.
But your testimony was that you're teaching the staff to be more diligent. Have there been issues with staff not rechecking when there's a card that's rejected or something along those lines?
Since I've been there, I've pretty much been doing the card reader. Previously, I couldn't say, I do know when Dub Line was there, it was a free-for-all. I know they hosted parties, underage parties, at other places. Cover Two is one of them, that they hosted an underage party for individuals, and those individuals have tried to come back to the establishment and they're rejected at the door.
And that's, and Dub Line's the security company that Mr. Laporta chose to use for his security at El Presidente?
Yeah, they were managing the club.
You said that you're working with staff about pat downs. Your exact comment was that they're not the greatest. What does that mean?
Everybody can always use work, I mean, I'm not perfect, but I'm trying to get them up to my par. You know, I'll tell them like little tricks, like they like to hide a knife behind their wallet, or they'll put their cellphone in the way, so when you pat down, turn, don't be afraid, turn the pocket, turn the wallet, turn the cellphone, make sure there's nothing behind it, don't just touch it, and call it good.
And then you testified that you, when things get really busy, you don't use the wand. Do other employees choose which policies they want to follow?
It's when we get, like if we get a rush of people coming in, it's not if the club itself is busy, but if we get a rush of people coming in, I'll do the pat down. Because it's a lot faster than a wand, because if it goes off, and you gotta try and figure out where it's at, is it, you know, belt buckle, you know, so rather than say, okay, I know what's going off for a belt buckle, because they, some of them come with them gigantic belt buckles, I just, it's faster to get people going through by doing the pat down.
So you also previously said that you're the one who primarily uses the ID card scanner, so if you're doing the ID card scanner, who's doing the pat downs?
I scan the ID when the ID's being scanned, because it doesn't just like instant, I pat them down.
How many bouncers are typically at the door? Is it just you?
Typically, there's two at the door. One, well, that I'm working with, teaching them, and then myself. And then there's usually two to three that are out actually in the club.
Okay, no further questions?
No follow-up.
You said that when you started, the scanner was already there. What about the security cameras, were they operational?
Yes.
And the wand, is that something you implemented or was that being used before?
That was something that came actually the second day. Mail order, takes a little while for delivery.
Was that your idea?
I had suggested it, and I was told they were coming.
Okay.
So...
I don't think I have anything else, thank you.
All right, Mr. Laporta. You've been operating this bar since about March of 2018, right?
Correct.
Okay, and when you started to operate the bar, did you contract with Dub Line to manage the bar?
Yeah.
And you were also operating...
The way we worked, like the security part there, because the previous owner had a, had the bar going too. And then he offered a little part of the company that was managing the bar, because I didn't have experience in the bar business, so I accepted the contract and we moved on with that. Very bad decision, really poor decision to make. I was in the two areas, so I didn't know the real, where the company came from, so...
So there's a bar and a restaurant, correct?
Correct.
And you've always been operating a restaurant? And Dub Line was already there operating security for the bar?
Security for the bar.
And you agreed to expand that so they could also just manage the entire bar?
Yeah.
Okay. You said that turned out to be a very bad decision?
Yeah.
Obviously, you agree that all these problems while Dub Line was managing the bar and running security, that stuff happened, right? And you took action because of that?
I started taking action, because the police approached me and I started talking to them, and I did whatever I could to actually get out of that contract as soon as I could.
And that was at the end of October 2018?
Yeah, when that happened, the incident happened with Isaac, when he stepped into the, that person that was there, they dropped the glass, it was like, I cannot keep this. I was like, you guys are done. Doesn't matter if I get a legal problem, you guys, it's just not happening.
So you told them after that October...
And after that, Isaac was prohibited to actually go.
Right. So you told them after October, they're not charged?
If they're in the contract, you're out.
And they're gone now?
They're gone.
You said after the incident where Isaac kicked the person in police custody, you told Dub Line that Isaac wasn't allowed on the property anymore?
I wasn't allowed to go in my property.
Was he back on the property after that?
No.
Okay.
He even tried to go to the bar one time and I kicked him out, to be honest.
Now, when Dub Line was there, it was open Fridays and Saturdays, is that right?
Correct.
Did you in fact close the Fridays after Dub Line left?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
That was a measure that needed to be taken, so I can try to control the place.
So you cut out one of the nights completely? And you started closing at 2:15?
2:15, started closing. And after that incident that happened with the open late, I tried to like enforce it more like, you know what, close the last call, 1:45, 2:00 you start turning the lights on, I want everybody out here at 2:15. I don't want nobody here. The only ones that stayed are the staff, legally they can stay there because they need to do the cleaning. And that night actually was almost all done. There was only one guy that was the, one of the boyfriends of the bartender, because usually it's really night, so they try to score them to their vehicles and all that.
All right, and you have installed security cameras, is that right?
The system, the scanner, we had it in June, it was a handheld device. I was not happy with the handheld device, so we upgraded because of that incident with the miners, I upgraded to a better system, that's more like stationary system, and that has been there since August, I believe. I did more updates to the system to make it better, now it has forensics and all that, so I can have more, they can detect more fake ID. We have detected fake IDs.
Correct. And now that your employees, or the Dub Line employees are in charge of using that machine, they check every ID?
Every ID.
Okay. And you also have security cameras, is that right? And they now record?
They hold 30 days. Instead of the 14, I hold, they hold 30 days.
Okay, so they do record, and you keep... Okay, so they do record, and that you keep them for 30 days?
Correct.
Okay. Now, after you fired Dubline, how many meetings have you had with the police about trying to address issues at your facility?
Zero.
Zero, so they haven't come to you at all?
At all.
After you fired Dubline, to try to see if they could fix these problems, is that correct, or?
Correct.
I don't have any other questions.
Uh, Mr. Laporta, I guess I'll, I'll start with the elephant in the room, why did you keep Dubline on until November of last year?
Okay, the problem was that, in my other establishment, I was going really low staff, and I was really involved, either cooking or doing those stuff, the point here is that they had a lot of information for me, because they would control the whole thing, and they had a lot of information, I started getting, realized when the start, the tickets coming in, and I started like, okay, let me work, probably something, they're, they're always hiding their racism thing, and they always say that they're, they're pushing us, they're like, and I didn't know what, what, what way to go, and, uh, I took this issue, I wasn't the contract, I couldn't just walk away from them.
Well, you'd think illegal activity would breach the contract, but I don't know if Mr. Laporta qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, so, basically, that's our question, uh, I tried to do what it take, took to actually take them out, the police was working with them too, they tried to fix things too, in their crooked way, because I didn't see any results, when I took over, I see the results, the, the, the police calls drop a lot, they, I didn't have any incidents, so I thought that they could do better, actually, than what they did.
Uh, you, you testified that you, you had another location that was relatively low staff, where, where is that location?
Two Rivers.
In Two Rivers?
I actually live in Two Rivers.
And, and you, you've run restaurants before, correct? Um, while Dubline was in charge of the downtown Green Bay location, how, how often were you present at the restaurant?
In the restaurant, I was present in the restaurant all during the week, the problem was at night, at nighttime, at least one of the days I would try to be there, at least one of the two days, that's the reason why I shut down one of the days, because I couldn't be in both days at night, it was impossible for me, I was working 20 hours a day already, so, it's hard.
Okay, and having experience running restaurants, having another location, uh, whose decision was it to buy alcohol from unapproved vendors like-
That was my manager of the bar, he didn't know the rules, and a lot of the bottles to work from the previous owner, but because of the lack of accounting in that place, when I got there, it was a mess, honestly, it took me months to actually cut up with the elite, left the past year accounting, so, um, a lot of the embosses I couldn't find, so a lot of the liquor wasn't left from the, from those stores, it was from the previous owner that had it there, but I couldn't find the embosses.
But there was, there was alcohol that was purchased from unapproved vendors that was discovered by the-
Yeah, he, he didn't know about that, and I instructed him, you never do that, I said, you need to go through a distributor to do it, he thought it was easy, just like, he runs off something, go to the store and buy it, that you cannot, you know.
Uh, no, no further questions.
I got a few. Interested in ownership, now, you, the other restaurants you own are just restaurants, not bars?
Yeah, it is restaurants, well, there's restaurants in Barbita, I don't open after, after hours.
After hours, okay, well, basically it's a restaurant, but you serve alcohol?
Correct.
Okay, uh, for the El Presidente, could you describe to me, how, how did you get involved with this, with the owners, and how long, was it, uh, you took over from the owners, or was there joint ownership for a while, I'm a little unclear?
Yeah, what happened is that, when he started the business, I invested with him.
Right.
There was a, those are the, so he actually has another restaurant here, so he thought he had enough experience to, to, to do it, it was really bad management, but one day he just decided to close the place, and I'm like, where is my money? So what are, you just don't close a place, so I, where is my investment? And he goes, the thing is going really bad, and I can't, I can't do it anymore, so I tried to take over the place, and it was a really, not in the best shape myself to actually do it, because I was really busy, but instead of losing my money, I tried to, tried to save my money, right? Think that is not happening, uh, because I'm trying really hard to put that restaurant in, they, they own a lot of money, it's that place to them, so they started, I tried to work in the finances as much as I could, uh, even the landlord knows that, that's why he's trying to support me, and, and anyway, he can, but he, right now, he was in Miami, actually, so, that's probably his idea, but, um, well, I don't know, uh, then after that, I took over, uh, I started building the restaurant, because it was a mess in the restaurant too, they left me without nothing in the restaurant, basically, the, all supplies were there when I took over, so, uh, I work in the recipes, I change the recipes, try to make it more, more good, more, I said, every aspect of the restaurant, I didn't have enough time to go through the bar part, that's the reason why I hired this company, because it was just way too much work to be done, that I was, I couldn't split more.
And, and the, the bar was already in operation when you-
Yeah, when I got there, the bar was in operation, that was not an idea that came with, for me, my idea would be, but it needs money to invest and make it like the venue that we talked to, uh, in the, with the, with the landlord, but it needs to be like, we need to cover the center part, that's gonna close, I don't know, over $20,000 more in investment, thing that is not easy, right now, in the shape of the business, and, uh, so that's why I keep holding it, like, to start increasing the funds so I could do something different, because I don't like the problems, to be honest, I'm not a type of person, I don't like problems, if you see my reviews, if you see, if you talk to the, to the city manager in Thursday, everybody loves me, but it's just that, I really participate, just participate-
Pro, sorry.
I really participate a lot in the city.
Do they have any water?
Sorry. I participate a lot in the city, but, um, and that's something that I wanted to do here, it's just that my timing and the shape of the place has been, has been in my way to do what I'd like to do.
Do you know the original business plan, did it include the bar, was it just a restaurant and then that, I gotta get the feeling it was-
That's something, they, they gave me a ticket, it said, I didn't know about that, uh, that, uh, how do you call that, that you signed?
Oh, the, uh, the, uh-
The-
You're referring to the stipulated agreement?
Yeah, stipulated, yeah.
With the protection policy and the, yeah.
That one, I didn't know it wasn't effective, I didn't know the rules, those are the two tickets that I got that I didn't know.
Do you wanna, you weren't a part of, well, no, you were just an investor at that time at the beginning, okay, um, and that question, you went with Dubline because they were already there?
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
So that's how you chose them, uh, and you, you run other restaurants, but you, you run no other bars?
No bars.
No bars, yeah.
I've been trained to learn in the way.
Yeah, that's a hard way to learn. Um, with some of the, uh, talkings with the police, there were, uh, talks of interventions, closing early, uh, the police report that, you know, it seemed like for a month or so, uh, you'd close early, then it went back, for you, it was closing early, uh, was that more of not being open on Friday?
Yeah, it's like closing and reducing, because legally you can be open until 2:30, but no, I, only to 2:15, so there's no issues going on.
And, and there was talk of perhaps, uh, shutting down the bar and just doing special events?
Yeah, I wanna do like a wedding hall, something like that, but I need, the, the middle part needs to be closed, so I need to find, I had to, to close in the, the middle part.
Ah, okay, I see what you mean, yep, um-
Because of the noise, you know, some weddings start when the restaurant is gonna be operating, so.
So, uh, recently though, you said you haven't met with the police, have they not reached out to you though, have they not notified?
Since, since, since the last, then since I fired Dubline, I have never talked to them again.
Okay, uh, thank you.
There's no intent of communication, like, it was stated before that they tried to communicate, I like to communicate recently with me, not, not really.
Okay, uh, I have no further questions for you, thank you. Okay, thanks.
No other witnesses?
Okay, well then, uh, I would like to ask an officer, how did we reach out to Mr. Laporta?
Initially, or after?
After Dubline was-
After, I guess directly to him, we did it, we sent landlord notifications, but again-
Also with the landlord?
Yeah, again, there's just frustration-
Right, yep.
-with us, from night shifters talking to us with other people, and obviously, enough and enough, we tried everything, but running a little revocation, and nothing's worked, he's told us multiple times, I'm gonna be there on weekends, and he hasn't, he's told us multiple times, I'll do whatever I need, he said, closing early, okay, 15 minutes from 2:30 to 2:15, that's not closing early, that's, you know, he's a very likable guy, I like Marco, but he's running a horrible business that is ruining other businesses' lives downtown, and their employees, when they can't stay past 10 o'clock because they don't feel safe, we've tried to work with them, says right things, but never follows through.
Is there anything else you can tell us from conversations with other owners, uh, any other information from other owners that you could share with us?
Other information, I know they're frustrated with us, they're frustrated with Marco, I don't know, I guess we're, we're at a loss, I don't know what to do.
Okay. All right, I have no, oh, yes, please.
If I may add, I'm just working the night shift.
Officer, could you just sit here, I'm not sure you're on camera.
Absolutely, um, I just wanted to add, and working-
Smile.
Working the night shift and whatnot, um, with the numbers we have, you know, we have, we have a minimum of 10 officers covering the entire city of Green Bay, and we have incidents like this, it's not just officers from the downtown district that are responding, you're pulling everybody, far east, far west, to come down to deal with a problem bar, and that's honestly unfair to all our other citizens, you know, and it's, the reports show that, the incidents show that, so I just, that's, I might wanna add my two cents on that part.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just stay here.
Smile, uh, then, uh, for legal, I do believe I know the answer to this, but even for the record, and just to make sure for myself, I know we have issued liquor licenses for restaurants, but I don't believe there is a special restaurant liquor license, correct? It's a liquor license that can be used?
Correct.
And so there is actually no way to stipulate, uh, for us legally to say this is only for a restaurant, correct?
Not with the state of Wisconsin liquor license.
Right, that's what I thought, okay.
We're gonna give both sides a closing argument, or a closing statement, and then-
Yep, 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 I just wanna make sure I've got all my questions answered, and I believe I do, before closing arguments, anything? Okay, uh, I'll start, I believe.
Yep, uh, committee members, thank you for your time, your attention, uh, with the, paying attention to the testimony, reviewing the evidence, uh, while we've been discussing a pretty serious matter, uh, the city doesn't take the decision to not renew someone's liquor license, um, frivolously, I mean, we, we don't take it lightly, uh, there have been a lot of incidents at, at El Presidente, now, there've been a lot of calls, a lot of violations, and yet the course of conduct, the violations, continue, uh, we watched a video from as recently as a month ago, the fights are still happening, the, the violations are still happening, um, many different opportunities have been presented, uh, to, to Marco and to the staff at El Presidente to correct that behavior, we've brainstormed with them, we've given them access to resources, um, and those opportunities have been squandered. Um, I don't have any personal ill will towards Mr. Laporta, like Officer Strainey said, I think Mr. Laporta's a, a likable guy, um, but he hasn't been able to run his business in a way that follows the rules and regulations that it's obligated to follow under the law. Uh, it's disheartening that after all the effort the city has put to revitalize downtown Green Bay, uh, that at bar close on the weekends on Washington Street, it's not abnormal to have huge melee's in the, in the street, in the middle of the street, uh, over a dozen officers should not need to be dispatched to respond to one problem bar, uh, for, for crowd control purposes, employees at other downtown businesses should not feel unsafe, uh, or the need to lock themselves in their buildings after 10 o'clock on those nights. Uh, those employees shouldn't feel obligated to refuse night shifts at, at their employers because they don't feel safe, uh, because El Presidente isn't able to control its crowds or communicate with police when there are incidents, uh, there's been, there's been a lot of finger pointing, um, the buck stops with Mr. Laporta, he runs the business, how it operates is his decision, uh, he can't scapegoat Dubline as the sole cause of the problem, he chose to continue, uh, to employ Dubline as his security, bartending, uh, as he described it, running the, the restaurant on the weekends, running the bar on the weekends. He's also responsible for the conduct of, of his business and the current security, um, that, based on the testimony, appears that it's still in training, um, we heard from the, the head of security, um, that he's, uh, trying to bring people up to speed, but we've had too many incidents where a year after the bar went into operation, there weren't security cameras installed, months later, they were only recording for a few days, they weren't recording for the full time that was, um, required from the stipulation agreement that was signed off on, uh, Mr. Laporta was present for the operating after hours, uh, the fights continue, many opportunities have been given to El Presidente to clean up their operations, many promises have been made, uh, and when you look at the last year, and all the violations, uh, all the second chances that have been given, there's just no rational way to recommend renewing the liquor license at El Presidente, uh, as such, I, I would urge this committee to uphold its recommendation for non-renewal to the full council, thank you.
Thank you, I respectfully have to disagree with the characterization here and the way that Mr. Laporta and El Presidente are being painted, as Mr. Laporta testified, uh, he has another business that's running just fine, where he doesn't have these issues, he came into this particular circumstance as an investor, uh, when they wanted to close, and he didn't wanna lose his money, he thought, I'll try to run this place, he's never run a bar before, but he has run a restaurant, then he got there, there's no invoices for alcohol, there's no food or supplies in the bar to even, or in the restaurant to even start serving food, the recipes aren't right, he has to basically start over, the record-keeping is terrible, he doesn't know where some of these bottles came from, and he admits that his manager did make a mistake, but it has not happened since, he cleaned that up, so to suggest that he doesn't take direction to try to fix things is certainly not true, because he cleaned up that issue, and it hasn't happened again, Dubline was something that he inherited, they were there, and he, he allowed them to stay, and he expanded their ability, or their responsibilities, not knowing their history in Green Bay, which apparently the police do know, and which apparently his now director of security does know, because we've had testimony from police officers and from the director of the security, that they've caused problems everywhere they go, and as one of the officers put it, they push the legal envelope, now, it's suggested by the city that Mr. Laporta should have just said, fine, you guys can't stay here, but he had a contract with them, as he testified for six months, uh, they started in March, and then in August, September, he gave them their 30-day notice, the six months ran up, and they were gone, in fact, when Isaac caused the problems, uh, where he kicked an individual in front of a police officer, even though the contract had not yet expired, Isaac was not allowed on the premises anymore, so I think it is accurate to say Dubline caused a lot of these problems, you look at the number of calls, the calls for service from the city's own records during the seven, six to seven months that Dubline was in charge, it accounts for 43 of the calls, after Dubline left, there are 10 calls, so the number of calls dropped substantially because of the efforts made by Mr. Laporta when he decided to come and personally run the bar, is 10 perfect? No, October, November, I'm sorry, November, December, January, February, March, April, you know, six months, 10 calls, or in the six months prior to that, there were 43 calls, so obviously Mr. Laporta has taken steps to try to fix this problem, and it's moving in the right direction, he has got the cameras working, he does have the scanner, he does have the wand, he does have the pat downs, he's got an experienced director of security who is training people to use all of these safety measures appropriately, so he's doing what he needs to do to try to fix this, he closed down one of the nights, he started closing a little bit earlier on Saturdays, maybe he could close even earlier than that, and he's certainly willing to consider that, uh, but he, to say that he's not done things to try to address these issues is simply not true, and to say that there has not been improvement is simply not true, there's been substantial improvement, the calls have gone down significantly, from 43 to 10, uh, so he's made steps, he's trying very hard, I know, I'd also, I know, apparently, I know now, and, and I haven't researched this issue, but I'll take the city attorney at his word, that you can't require him to close the bar, but he's certainly- but he's certainly willing to agree to that voluntarily. I understand he can't enforce that, but that's something he's willing to do. But I think this is moving in the right direction, and he's earned the opportunity to continue with his license, and it should be removed. Thank you. Well, that's it. Now, we need to deliberate. Last time I did this, we had a room we went off to, the room we could order, is everybody just can leave while we deliberate our, we could go somewhere, or everybody else can go somewhere. I think it's easier for us to, is there a room available? We could go and discuss this?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't have my key with me.
Last time I did this, we did?
I don't think, I think you guys, you just make a recommendation to the city council?
No, no, that's already been done. This is it.
Okay.
We're the final authority on this, we're the?
Correct.
So?
Sir, this room is available next door, it's empty and open. Well, the reason I ask that is because the assistant city attorney who works with the gentleman here, told me that we had to wait before June 18th, so that the full council could consider the recommendations that were being made by you guys. That was an email that I received from his?
So this goes before the full council?
Correct, yeah. And then we'll relay your findings and everything to them, and with your recommendation, and then the full council makes the ultimate decision, right?
Because the findings of fact and the conclusions of law that are made tonight, there's an opportunity for both parties to object to any inaccuracies, or to comment on those findings of fact before the council. That's my understanding of the procedure.
Right, that's why I wasn't sure.
I just don't remember it, I mean, I've done this once before, but it was when I was first elected, and I don't remember it going that way, but I, you know, it was five years ago. So, okay. Am I am correct, though, that we are allowed to deliberate?
Correct, yeah. And then, when you come back, just kind of relay what you discussed and?
And you'll be with us, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Van De La, what's your motion to have a view?
Yeah, probably just motion to deliberate.
Okay, motion to deliberate?
Second.
Motion to deliberate by Alder Van De Leest. Second by Alder Stevens, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we are deliberating. I take a few notes. I'll take a motion to go back into session. Motion, not to go back in session, I'm looking for, motion to go open in session by Alder Van De Leest. Second by Alder Stevens, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, we are now back in session. I'll make a statement, and then we will vote. We deliberated, and this is a very, very difficult position to be in. No one wants to deprive someone of their livelihood, or any portion of their livelihood, I believe. Mr. Laporta is a hardworking man, maybe he's way overworked, he seems to me, and very conscious, trying to do the best he can. He sort of came into this backwards. He was an investor, didn't seem to be too much involved in the business, the business had issues, and he ended up getting sucked in to try and save his investment, which I appreciate, but he seems quite unprepared. You seem to be learning the bar business, which you've never run, by hard knocks. Instead, you seem to be more reactive than being able to be proactive. An incident happens, you learn from it, you try to fix it, but that's a very difficult and poor way to learn the bar business. It's just problematic. The incidences, I mean, he has made improvements, I think, you know, I think he is trying to do his best he can, but I think being overworked, being unfamiliar with the bar business, it's just, and even with the 10 incidences, just last month, there was a large disturbance at El Presidente. So even though there are fewer incidences, there are still significant incidences. So it, it, we deliberated, and our feelings are that it's very unfortunate, but we will now take a motion to deny?
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny by Alder Stevens, second by Alder Van De Leest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're done. I believe we just adjourned, there's nothing else?
No, you do, hold on a second.
Yep, I would just add, we truly regret having to take this action, and if there was any way we could, if there was a license we could issue just for a restaurant, I think I would gladly, gladly do that. I wish we could. I just don't feel it's a good practice to be able to issue a liquor license that can still be used for a bar, so that's a wrong precedent to set. So, all in favor, we did that, now it woke to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. By Alder Stevens, second by Alder Van De Leest, all in favor? Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.